Good evening, everyone. It is Wednesday, December 17th, 7:00 PM. We're gonna get started. Nice to see you all tonight. Kelly Lynn, can we get going on roll call, please?
Mr. Andreessen.
Good evening.
Mrs. Briscoe. Mr. Bush.
Mrs. Miller.
Mrs. Ost. Mrs. Tony. Mrs. Linsky.
Our student spot.
All right. Good evening. This evening, we have a wonderful student spotlight to share with our board and our community. We have six girls from our Project Lead the Way classes, our eighth grade Project Lead the Way classes. So that's why I call it a Girls in STEM. We're gonna be highlighting a couple of projects that have been happening as part of our App Creators unit, and then a few projects as part of our Architecture unit. And so students in the Project Lead the Way class in eighth grade take that for the whole semester. So they've engaged with both of those. Mrs. Horsh had reached out to me a couple of months ago and had said, "I've got some really great work that's happening, and I think this would be perfect for our student spotlight." And so I'm really excited for you to get a chance to see the work that's been happening in these two courses. A few years ago, we highlighted two other units that were happening. So these are two new ones that you haven't had a chance to see yet in the spotlight. So I'm going to switch it over to Ms. Horsh and her students to share the learning that has taken place in their class.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. We've got a little presentation that we're gonna share. So as Dr. Johnson mentioned, we have eight of our girls here that I wanted to recognize for the work that they've been doing with our App Creators and our Green Architecture. So in App Creator, students are introduced to the field of computer science, building on what they learned in seventh grade, and identifying a personal community problem of interest to them that can be solved with a mobile app solution. In Green Architecture, the focus is the practice of architecture and sustainable development. They're exploring residential building systems, residential construction, architectural documentation. And in the end, they're designing a tiny house or a small home using recycled shipping containers. So we're gonna start with App Creators. We use a program called MIT App Inventor. It's a free program that's online, and anyone could really use it. The programming language uses blocks that you drag and drop onto the screen and learn different ways to interact with the app. It resembles puzzle pieces that fit together to make instructions that are translated into Java or computer language. So the screen looks like this when you first open it up. This is the designer window where you get to decide what it's gonna look like, what images are gonna be seen when you open up the app. You add the different buttons or the different graphics that are going to be used in it. And then in the block screen is where you do all of the programming. So this is what it would look like on that screen. Sometimes we're starting with partially finished programs, or they have to fix different glitches that are happening based on whatever the program is doing. You zero in on that part of the application and figure out how to fix it. Other times, you're just starting with a blank template, and they're deciding what they want the app to do. So this is one that was partially put together. It was basically you're launching a balloon at a moving target. And when they open it up, they have the graphics there, but it's not functioning the way that it's supposed to. And so they're learning the language to fix it and make the program work so that when you swipe up, the balloon goes towards a moving target that's moving back and forth. So with that, I'm gonna give a couple of our students a chance to show what they've created. Starting with Emily. I'm gonna point out Emily's program that's on the right. Doesn't have a video, but I wanted to share. That was the balloon toss one. She changed the background. She changed the balloon to be a basketball. And she changed the target to be a moving basketball hoop. And she did this while others were still kinda working to figure out where the glitch was. So I was super impressed with her work right away. And I'll hand it over to her to share one of the other applications that she created.
So the task on the left is a task reminder app. It allows you to make a to-do list of things you wanna get done. This is the start. If you press the little button on the bottom, it says, "Okay." And it takes you to the main screen. You type a task in the little text box right there. I decided to add "drink water." And there are some examples down below the text box. After you type in the task, you press the Add button, and the task appears right there. And then, after you got the task done, you can click on the task, and then the task disappears. I went for a cool blue theme. So when you're doing your task, you can kinda stay calm. That's it. Thank you.
A Good Excuse is one of the two apps that we could choose to create. Our version was made from scratch with barely any starting code. When you open the app, you have a choice between two stories. When you choose one, you'll be taken to a screen where you have a prompt and a text box. The first story shown is A Good Excuse. When you answer the prompt and press Submit, your answer, along with some linking text, will appear in the empty space below. This is like repeated until you finish all of the prompts, and a Folks' Use Note is completed. After it's completed, you can either restart the program or you can go back to the home screen. The next story shown is Reason for Expulsion. It has the same mechanics, but different linking text and some different prompts. When the story is finished, you'll end up with an expulsion notice. While this is like a story thing, it could also be used in real life to create like expulsion notice or like other notes.
I find this one to be very funny because it was Chloe who was getting expelled because she started a food fight.
Okay, I would never do that.
And so I had to include this video. All right. The next one is our numbers game.
I ended up creating four different apps, all with different uses and types. This app was the one that I felt was the most useful for school use. This app helps young kids practice addition and counting. It also is a way to take teaching outside of school and outside of the classroom for kids to better practice their abilities with math. With the program, I took problems offline and screenshotted them to add them to the designer. And then kids are able to click the numbers. And if it's wrong, it says like, "Oops," or "Try again." And if it's right, it moves on to the next set of equations.
And I just wanna add, she created this from scratch. I didn't write anything that she said about, you know, what it would be a good use for teachers. She came up with it, and she helped so many other kids in class, too. Problem solved with what they were doing in class and couldn't figure out why it was glitching. And she finished hers so much quicker than others. And so I actually stole her from gym class one of the days so that she could help me. And she couldn't participate in gym that day anyways, so it was okay. But Bailey was a great help in class. And then here's a little bit more of that program.
So what you're seeing is the user interface of what I created. I had to upload all those media files and then rename every single thing you're seeing to what it would be on the blocks area. So then I knew what I was coding and how it would work. Those are all the media files that I downloaded. Some of them weren't used because I ended up deciding not to use some of them for the equations. But then the blocks, that's all the code that I did in about two days for my app to work properly. I faced a couple of challenges because it started not working properly when I wanted to add a reset button. But we ended up just fixing it, and it worked perfectly fine. I created this app because I wanna go into teaching when I'm older. So I felt that this would be also a great use for my classroom, to take teaching outside of my classroom for my students.
Okay. So our next part is with Green Architecture. For our design showcase, we have a couple of design challenges that we wanted to share with you. This was, well, I know Gianna's gonna say a lot of it. We started right on the first day with the challenge. And then I'm also going to give you some information about what we're using to create like a 3D design of rooms. We've replaced using Revit, which was a costly program for the district, with a free program called Floor Planner. So I'm gonna turn it over to Gianna.
On the first day of Green Architecture, we were challenged with designing a bridge that would go across a roadway from a parking lot to an accessible park. Our model had to be over 45 centimeters and be at least six inches wide while still being accessible for wheelchair users. The bridge cannot touch the ground or use anything other than the 10 pieces of paper provided. And that was what I came up with. My dad's an ironworker, so anytime he would show me pictures, they would always have like triangle structures. So I just applied that to the bridge. And yeah. And then Ms. Horsh challenged our group because we finished so quickly to add railings and two ramps.
Yeah. Well, you have to scoot the thing closer because the ramp can't support it. Yeah. It's fine. It's fine. It helped.
All right. Floor Planner. I'm gonna take that. So we started using Floor Planner for our 3D designs and architecture. It's a 3D CAD software that is available. We were able to get an education plan for it. And so all of their designs that they're creating in class is basically under my membership. So when I open it up, I'm able to see every single thing that they're working on, whether it's some of our classwork or they're doing extra things at home, I can see, which is very exciting. But it's at zero cost for the district, which is wonderful. So first, I'm gonna hand it over to Rand, and she's gonna tell you about our classroom redesign. I'll mention that the picture on the left is something that when I was doing the training, I was recreating the classroom with the same program. It's a little bit off on the measurements because I didn't have the precise measurements. You'll see with their pictures. But I challenged them to recreate the classroom to make it a little bit more modern-looking.
Thank you. Hi, guys. My name is Rand, and so I will be over here. So I don't have my glasses, so just ignore this. So you guys might have to turn around. Merry Christmas, by the way. And Ms. Horsh challenged us to redesign the classroom to have seating for 24 students, a teacher work area with a computer station, desk and chair, four STEM closets, one teacher closet, space for four 3D printers, a TV mounted to a wall, and additional space for organizing student projects. And, well, I decided to add, I decided to add six tables with four chairs each because six times four is 24. Yeah. Bring math into this. And I decided to add her teacher desk in the corner so she can see what everyone's doing because she likes to spy a lot. And I added her teacher closet right next to it so she can grab her stuff. I added her two computers that she has. And I added additional, like, accessories. I added a little postboard. If you can see, like, it's over there. Yeah. Postboard, some plants to make it foresty, a TV. And I added these storage closets for projects and this side of the shelves for extra stuff. And yeah. Yay.
Do you wanna talk about yours briefly? All right. This one's Chloe's.
Hello. So I created my classroom design with a little more of like coziness vibe because just like our library at our school, we had like a lot of like cozy, like chairs, comfortable, like aesthetics. And so I started with like the green walls for our school colors, pretty much. I have the five printers instead of four to give Ms. Horsh a little more, like, I don't know English right now. A little more space for herself, I guess. I don't know. And I have extra lockers for her to store all of her storage or whatever material she doesn't need to use at the point. I have four chairs. How many tables do I have? Five tables with like four chairs. Yeah. There's some extra chairs included with the tables. And I have an extra TV that's, I think, a little more bigger, larger than the regular TV in our tech room. And then I have some extra posters that are a little more supportive because I know Ms. Horsh likes to have some like happy poster, positive posters around her classroom because I mean like, "Go Meteors."
All right. Next is the bedroom redesign. Are you talking about that one?
I know you guys missed me. So we had to do a bedroom redesign, redesign, and we had four bedrooms to choose out of. And the rooms must have had a bed, windows, closets.
It had to have outlets. Depending on the room, it had to have a certain number of outlets, a door, and then three additional pieces of furniture or items to make it kinda like your own type of room. You also had to recolor the walls and the floor to better make it so then you could have your dream bedroom.
They were all pretty small choices.
This is my bedroom. I had limited space, but I decided to add some vines on like the top of my bed to make it look like aesthetic. And then I added some cute pictures. I have light blue walls, curtains. And I had the smallest bed possible because Ms. Horsh said that you had to fit it in. And if I did my real bed, which is a queen, it wouldn't fit. But a problem with that also is that the sizes, you would type in, for example, twin bed. It wouldn't be the right measurement. So I had to go back and resize them to the right size. And yeah, I added a desk, and I'm very proud of that.
Here's a couple more samples. Did you wanna say anything about yours, Bailey?
So my bedroom is the one with the built-in closet that I used walls for. A lot of students decided to just take a closet from the actual like floor planner. I made a closet because that's what I thought was part of the assignment. I guess I got it wrong. I had like a bed and a desk in the corner because I wanted an L-desk, but none of the L-desk would fit that area like I wanted it to. So we have like an awkward-shaped desk in that corner.
And I'll say for this one, I did challenge them over Thanksgiving break if they came back with measurements for a bedroom that they could do their bedroom. Or in Chloe's case, it's a dream bedroom because it's a lot bigger than what it actually is. But so she was able, she was the only one that was able to do her dream bedroom instead of the small bedroom. What do you wanna tell us? I couldn't do a video of this because it was too dizzying. It was too much.
I mean, they do say go above and beyond, so that's what I did. So for my room, I took a little more of like time in creating it because I really like my room. It's a pretty fun place to be in. I get to just like be by myself and just chill. And so I added a beautiful unicorn first because that's the most like beautiful thing in there. And then I have my own corner sunroom with like a nice cozy couch with a side table, kind of. And then we have a queenside bed because everyone's a queen. And then I have my own dream library because I really like to read books. So I added a lot of bookshelves. And I didn't feel like putting all those books in because that would probably take me like 15 minutes. So and then I added my piano, which I have at my house, but it's not in my room. So I have an extra desk for me, too, with a Mac computer and a nice cozy black chair. And then I have a pool table because, I mean, why not? And then I have a person named Alberto, actually. He is doing multiple things in this bedroom. He's chilling on the bed. He's meditating. He's playing the ukulele, too. And then for my bathroom, I have a very huge bathroom. I apologize for the bad measurements. And I have a really organized bathroom, not like mine. And for my closet, I have a humongous couch because I felt like putting that in. And I couldn't find a long, like skinny rug, so I had to adjust that myself. And then I also have Alberto and Tina in there, and they're watching a movie together. And they're like eating popcorn and watching SpongeBob, probably. And then I have some extra like shelves around the place, some plants. And of course, I had to add a bunch of cats because, I mean, like, why not? And then that's pretty much it.
So with that, I really enjoy using Floor Planner because it's very user-friendly. They can add on to it. We haven't gotten into it yet, but we can add a roof to it. We could add multiple floors. So I'm, oops, I'm really excited where, okay, I thought I did that. I'm excited what we can do with the program. And it is nice having the little people in there, too, so that you can actually see the size of them and how everything does fit in. So at first, I thought it was a little goofy that they started throwing people in their bedrooms, but it actually is beneficial to see it. I don't know about the unicorn, though, but yeah. And just to see like what we're working on right now. That was actually today. They're working on creating a model shed. And it's a lot of hands-on stuff where we're actually cutting and measuring and trimming and sanding and gluing and putting things together. I will admit, the picture in the middle is my model. They are not quite there yet, but the material on the left is one of their walls that they're creating. So four walls, a front wall with a door, a back wall with a window. And yes, we are sawing, but we have lots of protective equipment to make sure that we don't hurt ourselves, or me, when we're doing it. And I think that they're having a good time doing it, right? Splinters a little bit, yeah. But we are having a lot of fun in the class, and I'm really excited to do it all over again with second semester. So that is all. And I wanted to even show you, if you wanted to take a look at this, I have a couple of their floor plans here. The nice thing about Floor Planner is you can get some really great visuals with the stuff that you create. So if we could just pass that around, but that is all.
I do wanna give a special thank you to Ms. Horsh as well. You have previously known her for a long time as a fourth-grade math teacher at MIS. And she stepped into this role this year, and she couldn't be a better fit for the role. She spent four weeks of her summer this past year. The Project Lead the Way courses require intense training for every course, and she dedicated four weeks over the summer to get the training. So it was a seamless transition. So thank you. You were doing an amazing job inspiring, you know, your students to dive into these projects. And so we appreciate that. Yeah. Girls in STEM. And I do wanna say thank you to the board, too, because we know this class was an investment. But as you can see, it's really preparing students to look at different career options that might interest them. So we hope that we have some future app creators, designers, architects, you know, through these courses that might pique their interest for classes at the high school level as well. So pretty cool to see.
And they have some Project Lead the Way courses at the high school, too.
Yes, they do. Yep. And it's pretty neat to see that there are a lot of the projects that they're doing. It's not just like learning a tech tool, but they're actually taking it and applying it into a real-life problem or situation or a room, like something that is applicable to the world around them. So it's been a pretty neat thing to see it evolve over the past couple of years and what Ms. Horsh has done to take it and run with it. So nice work, students, and thank you, Ms. Horsh. We do have a couple of things. We have a special gift as a thank you for coming out tonight to our students. And then if you wouldn't mind, we'll take a picture together.
You guys had so much fun doing it. You learned something. I know you had fun. I know a lot of you had fun. And coming up here and talking in front of everybody, that's a skill, too. So not only did you have fun doing this, but you did a great job presenting it to everybody. This is a little something for you guys, so you can all take one. I swear, they're all the same. One of them has three candy chains. No, I'm kidding. They all have two. And I can tell you, wherever you're going out here to court, not wrong. Thank you very much, guys. Great job. I loved it. Thank you so much. I absolutely will. Oh, sure. There you go.
Thank you.
Eyes are pretty big. It's okay, guys.
Making a wonderful job with everything. I can tell you had fun doing this. I'll just say this.
Yeah, we're good.
Thank you very much for your holiday break. It's a good way to go.
Oh, yeah.
Take care, guys. Have a wonderful night. Thank you. Okay, guys, that was wonderful. I think Megan Horsh did a wonderful job with that, Kristen. Thank you very much. It was absolutely great. Loved it. We have one person for public communication tonight. Debbie, would you like to join us up here?
Good evening. I just wanted, we wanted to come tonight and thank you and thank the district for supporting Mokina Miracles and the Santa's Secret Workshop. Each year, as the cost of living continues to rise, many of our nominated families face significant outstanding bills. The funds that we have raised throughout the year are gonna help support these families by easing that burden during the holiday season. While Santa's Secret Workshop is just one of our fundraisers, it also provides an opportunity for our Mokina students to showcase their talents, along with the adult vendors. We're happy to share the Mokina Miracle Elves have completed their shopping, and will be bringing all the gifts to MES this Sunday to be wrapped by our community. We will then deliver to each family with the support of the Mokina Fire Department and the Mokina Police Department, complete with lights and sirens. Some people have asked if there's anything else that we need, and we can always use gift cards. We would like gift cards from the local Mokina businesses such as Pepper Mill, Sap Taco, The Dock on Front, Simply Slices, or Chipotle, just to name a few. Now these families can enjoy their holidays even more because unfortunately, with the cost of everything rising, we're giving them more of their needs than their wants. So we're paying more and more bills, fixing cars. I mean, the bills this year were just astronomical. But we all have a good feeling to know that we have helped these families. They're safe, and they can hopefully have a Merry Christmas. So I just wanna thank you guys for supporting us again. Thanks. Thanks.
Anything from MTA tonight?
No, we don't.
Okay, MCSA? Eight forty-three?
All right, um Anna knows that I love giving out stuff that represents our program and things. So I know a lot of you probably have some stickers or some magnets or keychains, but um feel free to take as many as you'd like. So just coming today to kind of give an update um how we're at, sitting about halfway through the year. So we're currently at thirty-three students for our Self and Stellar Program. Um Self is at twenty-one students and Stellar is at twelve. So again, our Self Program is our social emotional learning foundations. And then our Stellar Program is our structured teaching and learning room. Um so we've, throughout the whole school year so far, we've had one student join Stellar and one student join Self. So um we've been pretty consistent with our enrollment, but um usually right around each, the end of each quarters when we start to get um some new ones coming in. So I'm sure come January, we'll start to have a few new students. Um so far this school year, we've had three family events. We've had Donuts with Dudes, our Thanksgiving Feast, and our Breakfast with Santa. Um for all these events, we've had at least fifty percent of our families attend, which um has, each year continues to go up and up. Um our Thanksgiving Feast this year, it's the first year we've done it, and this was by far the biggest event that we've had. Um we actually had all of our junior high kids bust over here so we can have our entire program here at one time, um along with their families. And um we had over sixty people here, so definitely our biggest event. Um but it was, it was great. Um our most recent one was um Breakfast with Santa, which was this past Friday. Um and if any of you were here, he's uh stayed and did the announcements and kind of ran through the halls and stuff. So um it's again, another great event for us. As you guys kind of know, like I talked about last time, we we changed our sensory space down there um to include it in the commons, um which I think has made a huge difference for us this year and it's been a huge success. Um we've seen a decrease in our behaviors, um we've seen a decrease in the intensity of behaviors. Um and I think that all has to do with that space down here, there. And you know, going from a sensory space where we have just a classroom to having more space where we can include more things to help regulate our students has has been huge. Um our raffle baskets, uh we do quarterly raffle baskets as an incentive. Um so last, we did our last one in October. Even though the quarter doesn't end until January, we're going to raffle them off this upcoming Friday. Um our big ones for this uh quarter are, we have a spiritware basket, um a fidget basket, that's literally just a basket full of any type of fidget that you can possibly find. Um a snacks basket where it's literally just, we asked our student what their, our students what their favorite snacks were, and we just threw all those snacks in one uh basket, and then a holiday-themed basket. One of the things that we've been really trying to do over the last couple of years is get our students more involved with clubs and activities. Um we currently have five of our students participating in clubs and activities. So um at MIS, we have students in our chess club and our STEM club there. And then at MJH, we have a couple of students in our anglers club, um a student in our Arabic club, and a student in our Dungeons and Dragons club this year. So um really trying to push them to continue on and um get out there. Um as I kind of mentioned the first time, our whole goal is to get our students back into that Gen Ed uh or back into their homeschool. Um or if they're in eighth grade, going into a less restrictive environment in high school. Um out of our current students, we currently have eleven students, or roughly thirty-three percent, um participating in at least one Gen Ed class. Um that's up from in twenty twenty-two, we only had five. So we're more than doubling that at this point. Um and then out of our, out of those eleven kids, um eight of them are participating in two or more. Um back, again, back in twenty twenty-two, we had only one student. So um those numbers continue to go up. Um and again, we're very grateful for our Mokina staff being able to support our program and being able to help out with that. Um our hope right now, we're on track to be sending two of our students back to their homeschool at the end of this year. And two of our eighth graders will be hopefully transitioning to a less restrictive environment in high school. Um so if that happens, that's sixteen kids over the last four years that have returned to their homeschool or gone to a less restrictive environment. So that's a, it's a huge win for us. It's, it's definitely our goal every year is to push those kids back into those Gen Ed settings. Um and again, it's a team effort with Mokina for that. Um our field trips so far, we've had uh in October, we went to the Payless Children's Farm. And um our big one in the winter is we do a secret student gift exchange where we um we, all the students go and they draw a name, and then they go to five, we go to Five Below. Um they have a ten dollar spending limit, um and they grab a gift for another student. We come back, wrap them, and then we um do a gift exchange, which will be happening tomorrow. Our goal, Anna's heard this, our goal is to be in and out of Five Below in twenty minutes. Uh we did it last year, we did it last year, um so I'm pretty hopeful that we'll be able to do it again this year. We literally, they get off the bus, they form a line and scan it in the bag, go on the bus, scan it in the bag on the bus. So again, trying to get it all done in twenty minutes, but I think we'll, we'll get there. So that's kind of an update of how things have been going um since October, any questions?
Thank you very much for coming out tonight, the update, love hearing, and good luck with the twenty minutes.
Yeah, I'll let you guys know next time how how long it goes, yeah. I mean, we literally bring our walkies and I set a timer and I give them like a ten-minute countdown, a five-minute countdown, and.
I believe you're very well organized.
It's, it's efficient.
Thank you very much.
So from last month to this month, there were no changes in the levy that was presented last month. The timeline, this presentation was presented to everyone last month, so I'm just going to hit some highlights. So right now, we're at the December seventeenth uh truth and taxation hearing. Some definitions for review. And then again, just to review, when we build the tax levy, we're starting with a, the budget that we, the board has approved. Taking a look at those areas where we're going to uh focus with the levy. Some high points on the levy is the O and M referendum um point three. The monitoring, the transportation levy, as we have purchased buses the last couple of years. We needed to adjust up the IMRF social security rate, uh decreasing the working cash levy, and then uh maintaining the tax rate with the increase in EAV has been um easy, right? Because as EAV goes up, you can grab that tax rate and still have your extension. This levy funds twenty-six and twenty-seven school years. The copy, keep going, uh the copy of the the levy is attached to the presentation. We're holding a truth and taxation hearing because it's a greater than a hundred and five percent of last year's extension. So by mandate, anything over a hundred and five percent, you have a truth and taxation hearing. There's some addition about our extension trend data, so you can see where we were for last year at twenty-one point three million. Um this year, we're anticipating twenty-one point nine. Just some easy math, we're at two point nine CPI, three percent, twenty million budget. We do expect about a six hundred thousand dollar increase. We're tax capped, so here's a history of our CPI, so this is the two point nine. We'll know what our levy twenty-six looks like in January as they release the CPI for twenty twenty-five in January. The next slide is the, it really interesting with the EAV over time. Uh I always try to point out where we started in two thousand eight, just above six hundred million. And then it took all the way through to twenty twenty-one, thirteen years in order to recover what was lost following the downturn in the market in two thousand eight. Hit the schools, started to hit school in twenty-ten, and then we had several years of down. Uh the next slide is the data that goes along with that. And you can see this year, last year, this district had a very large increase in EAV, the largest in the uh seventeen-year history at ten percent was the actual increase last year, ten point six. We are doing a balloon levy this year at twelve point five, just to make sure that we capture, um because we won't get the actual um EAV from the county accessories office until March. So we are um doing a balloon levy. Our history of our tax rate, and this is what the tax rate looks like through the years. And you can see when the uh limiting rate referendum was passed, that's where the increase in the brown. So we do put more into our um O and M fund after the limiting rate referendum. It went from light purple, which was the bond payment for the junior high, to the brown, which is our operations and maintenance. So while EAV has been going up, what's been happening is we have a decreasing tax rate. And the next slide actually kind of shows the trend down, so you can see the dotted is the trending down. And then the next slide, how do we compare to our neighbors? So this was just to taking a look at twenty twenty-four um with our, our neighbors, where Mokina has the lowest tax rate amongst the entire group with Will County, Shanahan, Frankfurt, New Lennox, Homer, Troy, Summit Hill, and Manhattan. And then the next slide is to look at how Mokina um compares with the other Lincoln Way feeder districts. And then um how do we compare with all of the elementary districts in Will County? You can see where Mokina shows up in, in here, where it's the third lowest amongst all of the elementary schools in Will County. Um with the, the lowest one um i- is Elwood. We talked a little bit about that today, um and the Ys. And then how do we compare on a uh four hundred thousand dollar home with the other Lincoln Way school districts? If you were to live in Mokina, here's your tax bill to Mokina. If you were to live in these other school districts, here's what your tax will, bill would be. And for the value, you get a pretty good school system. And then some of the, just some generic questions on tax bill, it's like, where does our money go? We're a people business, we spend the majority of our, our budget on uh salary and benefits, our people. And that data is from our uh budget hearing presentation a couple of months ago in August. And then another question was, that extra six hundred thousand, where does that go? And then when we do financial projections every year in March, this is on our website too from March, that it is going to go to salary and benefits. We can take a look at what our projections are. And we know that um as we have an increase in salary and benefits, that increase in levy is, goes to our people because we are a people business. And then there was a question about how could my um uh property taxes actually, if your, if your home value goes down, or if your home value stays the same, you actually could see a decrease if um uh the, the biggest bulk of a EAV went up ten, and say your individual house didn't go up as much. So you could see a decrease at that point in time. So this is kind of the explanation for that. So there was uh, there was uh no real changes to this presentation. I do, um if you can go back to slide four, Lincoln, I did make one change from last month to this month. I just included some additional information. So if you go four columns from the right, there's a three-year average actual expenses. Um because we've talked a lot about like uh levy style, where we levy for more than we anticipate. And budget style, where we budget for more expenses than we actually anticipate. So when you look at the expenses for the year, and then you look at the actual three-year historical actuals, you can see that um the actual expenditures for three years in each of those funds and what those were. The operation funds being ed, O and M, and transportation. So there's the actual three years of expenses. And transportation is high because we bought some buses, bought some buses. So it just kind of shows a little bit of where we budget more than we anticipate spending. Same kind of thing, we levy for more than we anticipate receiving. Okay, so that was a new column, that was the one ad from last month to this month.
Okay, thank you. Um so I have uh spoken previously about my concerns with this levy and um submitted some follow-up questions. I believe it was ten follow-up questions I submitted on this levy this month. Um and I appreciate you guys uh getting me uh answers on that, it was helpful. Um so there's a couple really, I think, big issues that I have with this. One, well, I'm going to first start by saying that, you know, we're allocating nineteen percent of the levy according to Dr. Shaw, or I guess Mr. Gurney, I don't know who. I'll just say, I'll just say Mr. Gurney. According to you, uh we, we um are allocating nineteen percent of the levy funds to O and M. Uh at a time when we're over a million dollars this year in uh deficit spending in an education fund. We've talked numerous times about um salaries and benefits, uh you know, exponentially raising. And basically, just so everybody understands, what we're doing here is laying the groundwork for our budget next year. So these funds here, like Dr. Shaw said, fifty percent is going to fund this current school year, which ends June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. But the other fifty percent of this revenue coming in via the tax levy will be what revenue we have for next year's um budget. So you look at that ed fund, um this is probably not the right slide, is it? Is this where it's showing what the levy is for? I think we're, I think the slide that really shows it well is the one that's like uh requested.
This, this one?
Yes, okay. So, so this one, so basically, you know, this is showing that what we're anticipating is getting fourteen point nine seven eight million dollars into the education fund with this levy. Forty-nine percent of that is going to, Dr. Shaw, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-nine percent will be to fund um the current year?
Correct.
And then fifty-one percent of that number will be going to fund um school year ending in June of twenty twenty-seven. So what we're doing here is deciding how much money is going to be going into these funds for next school year. And I'm concerned it's not enough. Knowing what we know, with the deficit that we have, that is going to increase because raises are compounding, benefits are raising on top of, it's a compounding thing. Thing, you know, we can't expect things to go down when we know via the, the, the collective bargaining contracts what the raises will be. It will be going up. So if spending stays the same, or even if we reduce spending, we're still going to have to have, you know, I mean, conservatively, we're still going to have to find a million dollars, right? So how are we going to find a million dollars if we don't reallocate what we're pulling in and we're, how we're allocating it? When we're, continue to bring in five million dollars or nineteen percent into O and M, where we don't have projects, I mean, we, I believe all of the projects that were, you know, the delayed uh preventive maintenance, the delayed repairs and maintenance to facilities, all that, the position we were in before the referendum passed, in other words, we're not in that position anymore. We've kind of caught up to what the necessary things are done. And we've, we're, now it's about keeping up, making sure things are replaced in a, you know, upon their useful life. So, so it's my impression, we've kind of caught up, and we're doing things like floors, we're doing things like sheds, we're doing things like, you know, carpeting. And, and this isn't, this isn't a hundred percent necessary. This is the kind of nice-to-have stuff, it's nice to look at new carpeting, but when we don't have the money in the bank account and, and it's just fleeting out to pay salaries and benefits, we've got to kind of prioritize how we allocate money. And, and so anyway, that, that's my point about the O and M. Um the second point is that, you know, we've had this, this is kind of pales in comparison, but it's still, it's still a thing, right? So we've had auditors for the past three consecutive years cite a, a, a deficit that they, you know, that we should be correcting. Um and each year, we, we don't correct it. And, and here's our opportunity to allocate enough money so that we don't have another year of deficit in this IMRF fund, and, and we're not doing it. We're doing it partially. We're making progress, but we're not curing it. So I don't understand the rationale, and it's not because I haven't. And it's not because I haven't asked. So I have asked, and I still don't understand it. I think it's really great to compare our tax rate to other districts. And certainly, it makes Mokena look really good. And I'm very happy that I live in Mokena with a lower tax rate when you compare us to other neighboring districts. That's great. And I know people, it's important to everybody. And I know that, you know, it's a reason people moved to Mokena and are happy with our town. And I like the strategy. But coupled with a lower tax rate means we have to be extremely responsible with our spending. And what we're doing right now, I think we could be doing better. And I just want to kind of point out one thing that I think is a really good indicator is actually in a different part of this board meetings packet, there's a part of the finance, part of the finance section, finance reports or treasurer's report. It's called monthly financial report. And it's basically, I think, periodic. I don't know if Dr. Shaw does this quarterly, I think. Some graphics that show nice, nice charts, you know, easy to understand. And the last one is really good because it says projected year-end fund balance compared to prior year. So basically, this is saying, what is our current year fund? What do we project our current year ending fund balance will be compared to prior year? And it's showing, the current budget shows that fiscal year '26 expenditures exceed revenues and the district's fund balance will continue to decline. $1.3 million compared to last year. The June 2026 fund balance reports approximately 166 days cash on hand. Our fund balances are going like this. And we're not preparing to have any different situation next year with fiscal year '27. So then we're going to be looking at, money's got to come from somewhere. How, what do we have to do to transfer amongst funds? Or how are we going to get more money in? Because our fund balances are going down. And like I said before, it's going to be drastic. This is not the right allocation in my mind, specifically with that O and M Fund 20 and Fund 21. Now, I think people will interpret me saying that I'm suggesting we spend Fund 21 money on something else. I want to be clear. I am not suggesting, we can't do that, right? We know we can't do that. We have to spend Fund 21 on facilities and warm, safe, and dry. So that is not an option, which I would never suggest that we do that anyway. What we don't have to do is have that other line, Fund 20. We don't have to have both. So we could decide to do something different with the Fund 20. And you combine those, and that's the $5 million. So hopefully, people understand and can track what I'm saying. But those are my major issues with the levy. And I'm very concerned that this is going to end with us having to go back to taxpayers because our fund balances are depleting. I mean, we've gone from 61% to 46% in less than two years. And we're running at a $1.3 million deficit. So, you know, everybody might not understand like the accounting and the finance. And I get it, it's complicated. The fund accounting is complicated. But like, it's unsustainable.
I would defer to Dr. Shaw before I speak, if you had something you wanted to say. Okay. Sure, sure, I appreciate that. So a few comments. And not being an accountant, feel free to stop me if I misspeak, Dr. Shaw. I think it's, I can appreciate what Mrs. McMillan is saying. And she has a deep understanding of accounting. And I do appreciate how thorough she is. I was also here, though, and part of a small group of folks that fought hard to get the referendum passed in 2019. And the situation that we were in, because we didn't spend enough to keep the buildings up to what they needed to be. And so I hesitate to think that if we cut money out of keeping our buildings up and not staying ahead of some of the issues that could crop up, what the situation that we would have to be in, going back to our taxpayers to ask for a referendum. But if we stay on track, like we have been historically, I think we would be in much better shape. I don't think it is out of line. I did ask a question of Dr. Shaw previously, just to make sure I understood about the percentages of a budget that are being spent towards O and M. And we're certainly not out of line with neighboring districts or, you know, schools within the county. I also think that, I haven't heard that we are out of the range that we need to be in, the 33 to 65. This is something that happens quite from year to year. You know, we do this, asking for more than what we think we'll get, projecting additional costs, and then they come in lower. I think that it's incumbent upon us to budget and budget well, knowing that costs are going up. And it's not just for the teachers, the well-deserved teachers that deserve their raises. But it's also just the cost of goods. So to cut from anything, I think, could really be in, we would put ourselves in the wrong spot. I am comforted in knowing that we have those statutory ranges that we, or the policy ranges that we need to be in. Those are being watched. We are kept apprised of all projects, sometimes being asked to approve things that don't need to be approved if things need to adjust. I may not always agree on some of the projects and their priorities, but I do support all of the effort and transparency that is being brought to the table. And I also would, I know it may sound like semantics and picking on things, but I also think that we should say that the budget is unbalanced. But that's not something that isn't uncommon in what we do and what I'm learning is something that schools do. So I just want to point those out and say that I am supportive of this. And I do appreciate the transparency.
Sure. Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Action items. Would anyone like to start us off with last month's minutes?
I move to approve minutes from the November 19th.
2025 regular meeting and closed session as presented.
All right, Anna. Questions or concerns?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I had made a comment on this, I think, for multiple months. And so I can appreciate that the minutes now are reflective that discussion occurred. But I don't think we're meeting the board policy by actually giving a summary of the discussion. So, and that's just on the action request, by the way. So there's a couple of things. One is, there was, there was discussion after both presentations, which is not reflected in the minutes at all. And, you know, what I really like is the summary of the discussion is in the minutes. It's in the minutes when we see the public communication. For example, it is a summary of what was actually discussed in public communication. And with each information report, it is a summary of what was discussed for each information report. But when it comes to the action items and the discussion by board members, there is no actual summary of the discussion. It's just notated that a discussion occurred. So I would just ask that we give the same level of detail to board member discussion on action items, which is probably the most important thing we do here, as equal to the attention and the detail that we have on discussion by our public communicator and the information reports. So, and just notating the discussions that happened because of presentations we had some too. So that's it, thank you.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Well, actually, I'm not going to make a motion to approve because I will not be approving. So I don't know. I guess I would say I make a motion to table the bills as presented last month until some outstanding, outstanding questions are satisfied. Table for one month.
Just for clarification, what was left outstanding?
Well, I think the biggest one is the contract. So we have a $46,000 payment in here without a signed contract. So I think, you know, fundamental is we don't want to pay out money without a signed contract. So I'd like, I mean, we haven't, the board has not seen the signed contract or the change orders to establish what is being paid out in this bill run. So that's one big one, right?
Yeah, that was requested this morning, and we...
Well, that was actually requested on Monday. I asked for the contract. But, you know, the other thing is, Bob, one of the things that I've struggled with for, and I guess, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'll just say, just generally with these bills is, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield and these benefit bills have really, this month is the first time I've ever seen one, which is great because it's very insightful and it gives me what I feel like we should have kind of always had is some insight into like what we're paying and what it costs. But, you know, part of establishing or part of approving bills to be paid is some method for the board to be able to establish that who we're paying insurance for is eligible. And so what I requested was something to show us that, you know, the employees that are covered by district insurance are actually eligible. And now, that is not to say that nobody is doing that. I, we all know and expect that the administration is establishing that eligibility. But for the board member's role in approving invoices $280,000, I feel it's prudent for us to be able to say, okay, here's the bill. Now let me see a schedule to see all of these people, what positions they have, and, you know, that they're eligible for the insurance. Because some people are not eligible for, some employees are not eligible for insurance.
Correct.
So that is why. So, and that, you know, wasn't provided. So I kind of like, you know, I just feel like I'm not in the position right now without seeing a signed executed contract for, and this is for work that was done a year and a half ago, that we don't have a signed contract for. And the contract that the board approved was exponentially more than what is being paid out. So, you know, I don't know that the board has any information on what scope was changed and, well, we don't. I don't know what changed after we approved that expenditure to where now the payment to the vendor is only a fraction of what the approval was. But there's no documents to support that. And this is prior fiscal year work as well, which I don't know that the board recognized that that was the case. You know, we had talked about kind of outstanding bills that were going to be paid out of the Fund 21, Fund 20 ending balances, because that does happen. But it was my impression at that time, back in June, that the playground really was like the only thing. And so, you know, then we found out about the shed. And now there's this second thing that, I think this is probably what is contributing to the need to transfer from working cash into Fund 21, is my guess. But I don't know. And right now, we have a bill for $46,000 that, you know, I've asked for supporting documentation and I don't have any. Plus the Blue Cross Blue Shield for 200, and I believe it's $228,000. So can we table this until we're able to provide these?
I'm not a fan of tabling this. The contract that you're alluding to, you have not named who the provider is. I'm interested in listening to what Perry Shaw has to say about that specifically. Thank you.
So we did talk about the flooring project from summer of 2024. We had engaged with Tiles and Styles. The board approved the project up to, I think it was $86,000. So we had board approval. We paid the architect, so we had this project cost. The architect sent the contract to Tiles and Styles. Tiles and Styles did not get ready to do their projects on time. These were the projects that the bathrooms at MIS that got pushed back for a year, if you guys remember this or not. And so we were only able to do a part of that project. It was part of the summer projects debrief. It's on our website. It was part of the Fund 21 March presentation. So those projects got rolled into this year with Pinnacle. Well, Tiles and Styles wasn't, they didn't get ready to do their projects on time. They weren't great with their paperwork. Dan from WOLD is grabbing that contract for us. He was going to send it to us. I just didn't get it today. The contract went from 86 to down. And since it was a decrease in the contract amount, we did not, I mean, I told the board, but we didn't have, since there's no increase, there's no board approval. Because the only time you need board approval is when you increase by more than 10% of the original contract. So we had board approval for the contract amount. We have the architect taking a look at it. The architect has the Tiles and Styles contract. We were waiting for the architect to actually hand me the Tiles and Styles signed contract. Dan is supposed to get that to me today. But we had all of those pieces in place. We went forward with it. We have a notarized pay app. We expected in our, it's on our website, the Summer 2024 Projects Debrief. We anticipated that Tiles and Styles would get us the invoice in December. They never did. Again, Tiles and Styles probably wasn't great with mobilizing or paperwork. So we never did get an invoice from them. We got an invoice from them last month. Sent it through WOLD because everything comes through the architect. The architect signs off and gets notarized with the pay app with the original contract, the deduction, and then the request for the $46,000, which is the job that they did for us. which is the job that they did for us. So that's the story with it. We are waiting to get that executed contract from, from Dan. Didn't hear back from him today. We did ask for that. But we do have like everything that you would actually need. Board approval of the project, public bid opening on the project, architect awarding the contract, and then mobilizing for the work. Tiles and Styles just took a while, a long time to actually send us the invoice.
So this is part of pre-approved board project that came in under budget?
Yes.
Okay. Now, for the sake of Kelly's point, whether that contract was paid this month or next month, that, only that portion does it matter? I'm only asking.
Does what part matter?
The, the flooring that we're talking about.
Does it matter if we pay it or not? Is that what you're asking?
Does it matter if we paid it this month or next month? I didn't know what I was doing.
The Tiles and Styles invoice was paid. We paid that. Yeah, it was paid.
Well, being as how it was part of a pre-approved plan that came in under budget, I can understand why you would have done that.
Yeah, it was paid.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, are we, are you saying, I got a couple of questions. One is, are we saying that the contract was signed by, not by us? Is that what we're saying? That somebody else signed the contract for us?
Tiles and Styles. Dan signs it from WOLD, Tiles and Styles, and then he sends it to us. And then we have the executed contract with the architect's signature and the subcontractor's signature.
So the contract isn't, we are not party to that contract?
There is. They send it to me and the final signature is my signature and.
So you signed the contract?
I, I don't, I don't have that paper copy in my hand.
I know, but my question is, did you, did you sign the contract?
I, I can't answer that. I can't put my hands on it right now.
So you don't know if you signed the contract?
That's correct.
And we already paid the bill that we have not approved yet?
The board approved the project. The architect approved the pay app for the subcontractor. We had a public bid. The bid was awarded. We had a contract with the subcontractor through the architect. They awarded the bid to them. It's all public document. The invoice was submitted, went through the architect, notarized from the architect saying this job is complete. We sign off and submitted it to the district for payment.
So why does the board approve bills right now if it's already been paid? I mean, what if?
It's in the prepayments in the bills. You'll see it in the prepayments. There are occasions when we do prepayments, when we need to get things paid.
But, but don't we, isn't that why they're here? Is so that you get board approval and then you pay?
On the accounts payable ones, the, the credit cards are already paid and the prepays are already paid. Most of the prepays are like officials, sports officials, and occasionally we've got some bills that we do prepays for.
I, I get, I'm just completely, I, this is new information. I, I don't understand why. It seems like we're going through the motions, right? It seems like, why get board approval? What if you don't have board approval? You've already paid the bills. Like, why are we getting board approval if the bills are already being paid?
Yeah, it's pre-approved, board-approved contract.
I mean, why is the board approving any bills if they're already paid? When did we pre-approve the bill? It's, it's on the bill, it's on right now. We have not approved it.
The, the prepayments are when we write the check before it comes to the board. It's a formality for the board to approve all of it. It's for transparency. It's for formality. It's so you can see everything that was paid, whether it was paid through the P-card, whether it was paid through the prepay, writing of checks, or whether it's through the accounts payable process. The accounts payable process checks will be printed tomorrow. Those checks are not printed as of right now.
I guess I just don't understand why we're getting board approval after the payment. I mean, is the check cashed? Like, what control does the board have if, what if we say no? I mean, it doesn't give us any, any ability to do anything because the money's already paid out. I, I just don't understand that procedure.
This is the only thing the board would do this for? For example, we could hire someone literally tomorrow and then approve the person January 21st. But we would allow them to start ahead of time.
Right, but then if the board doesn't approve, that, that hire is contingent on board approval.
Absolutely.
So then that person would not be, but right now we're talking about the money being gone from the bank. I mean, how are you going to get it back if, if it's not approved by the board? It was my understanding that the board was approving payments before they were sent. And, and now, I mean, I feel like this is just new information that I, I don't understand.
Mr. Andreessen? Mr. Andreessen, point of order?
Go ahead.
Just a point of order. We're, we're in discussion and we have a motion pending that doesn't.
If anyone would like to second that motion?
Thank you.
Would anyone like to second Kelly's motion? No, hold on, hold on. Kelly, it's been a minute. We've all been talking. Would you like to restate the motion you shared approximately 10 minutes ago?
Yes. I would, I move to table the monthly bills as presented. In light of these developments, I ask that potentially the board consider a special meeting perhaps to, certainly bills need to be paid. But I, I make a motion to table the bills as presented.
Okay. That being said, would anyone care to second her motion? If no one does, it will end right here. Would anyone like to second her motion? Hearing no one, I will move to approve the monthly bills as presented to fulfill our contractual obligations that we already approved the first time. Do I hear a second? Thank you. Kelly Lynn, please help us out.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Thank you all. Would anyone like to read partially?
I move to approve Personnel Recommendation 7C1 and 2 as presented, subject to successful background check and verification of credentials if applicable.
Okay, it was Lisa. Thank you very much. And, and questions or concerns on personnel? Hearing none, let's go.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to read the next one?
Sure.
Go for it, Julie.
I move that the board approves the 2026, 2027 workers' compensation renewal as presented.
Questions or concerns?
I just got a quick comment.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Congratulations to Dr. Shaw and everybody that worked on this. For those that don't know, there was a decrease from the previous year. So that, you know, you don't hear that a lot in the insurance world, decreases. So congratulations to the team on getting that, that done. And then our staff as well for, for being safe and.
Okay, first and seconded. Hearing no questions, Kelly Lynn?
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Novels?
I move to approve the addition of novels to the district novel list as presented.
Thank you, Julie and Lisa. Hearing any questions or concerns? Hearing none, Kelly Lynn, let's go.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Who would like to read the tax levy?
I move that the board adopt a certificate of tax levy resolution for the 2025 levy in the amount of education fund, $15,400,000. Building, buildings and operations and maintenance fund, $4,200,000. Transportation fund, $800,000. Working cash fund, $1,000. Municipal retirement fund, $350,000. Social Security fund, $350,000. Torque immunity fund, $1,000. Special education fund, $850,000. As presented in the 2025 certificate of tax levy. The district is in compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act. So I moved that the board authorize the president to sign the certificate of compliance with the Truth in Taxation Act for the 2025 levy.
Second.
Julie? Okay. Questions or concerns? Hearing none, thank you to everyone involved in this. And let's move forward, Kelly Lynn.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
No.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the superintendent goals for the 2025, 2026 school year as presented. Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, Kelly Lynn?
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the resolution abating the working cash fund of the district as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Questions or concerns? Yes, Kelly, floor is yours.
Um, I just want to clarify, um, this is something I had opposed and been vocal about in the past. But this, this one, um, I do think is necessary. And the reason is because it is going into Fund 10, which is where we need it and where in my opinion all of it should have went. But that's beside the point. So, um, for that reason, I will support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Oost?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony?
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes. Okay. Onto information. Ms. Tony, do you have anything you would like to share regarding the finance committee tonight?
No. Nothing really has changed from last month to this month, other than the next meeting and the plan.
And would you like to share when the next meeting is?
March.
I believe it's in March.
March 9. March.
And it's a packed, it's a packed agenda that night.
And we'll be talking about it before then anyway, but you're right. It is a packed agenda. Absolutely right. Thank you. Julie, do you have anything you'd like to share regarding the policy committee tonight?
Nothing other than the memo.
Okay. Bob, do you have anything you'd like to share that was not part of your information report?
Just what a wonderful place this is. It's really been nice seeing the, the decorations at all three schools. And then this past Saturday, to see the PTA and do it with such a great job with Breakfast of Santa. I think we had over 100 people here. Ms. Trolley was here, Ms. Levy was here, and it was a really, really nice event on Saturday. And I'm looking forward to bringing one, two, or three other gurneys down on Sunday, the Mokina miracles.
I have a comment, please, or I would like to say something, I'm sorry. On Bob. Bob, thank you for, for answering, uh, and, and everybody who participated in answering my questions. I believe I was the only board member that submitted questions. I submitted about 21 questions combined on the levy, the novels, the, anyway, the action items. But I just wanted to clarify, is this the only method board members are, are submitting questions? Is on the shared? I mean, are there questions happening outside of our shared document? I think the goal of the shared document was so that everybody gets the answers to the questions that board members are asking. And so I just noticed I was the only one asking questions. So I was just concerned that, is there other questions that, you know, aren't, the answers aren't being shared done?
I, I think over the course of weeks, there are going to be questions. I've had plenty of conversations with you on the phone and different board members. And not every single one of those questions that have been asked of me over the course of weeks, let alone months, has been shared with the board.
Generally, questions on the action items that board members have are being, are being shared and there's nothing I'm missing. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Andreessen, I have a, a comment.
Yes.
So I, I want to reiterate that I truly do appreciate Mrs. McMillan's thoroughness and, and questions. But it's not about the number of questions that, that board members ask in writing or in a conversation. It's the information that that individual board member needs in order to, to be informed about the decision. I do glean information off of everybody's questions. There are times when I don't have questions or there's times when I have a meeting. I think if we're going to engage as a team, we all have different ways of doing things. I want to operate as a team. And, and I think it does a disservice to, to building that teamwork, atmosphere if one point of, of raising how many questions is, is asked. The goal is to get the right information. And, and, you know, do what we can for the district and the, and the kiddos and our taxpayers. So, you know, that's all I'm going to say.
And thank you for people to share their opinion. That's part of what all this is about. Kristin, do you have anything you would like to share that was not in the information?
Not this evening. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and a Merry Christmas. Hope you enjoy the time with your families.
Thank you very much. Wonderful. And do you have anything else you'd like to share tonight?
Nothing additional to share, just some sweet faces on the first section of my board report to take a look at with Student Services shout out and then a couple of updates regarding professional development and family newsletter. Nothing else to add.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Shaw, anything else to add tonight?
I would just like to, um, uh, say, you know, how happy we are with the 10 routes. So our 10 routes are up and running. We have a, a dismissal. Everybody's pretty much home. Last bus is in just a little bit after four. We're pushing for that four o'clock to have everybody off the bus and home. So it's, uh, it's getting there. So that's a, we don't have any more. The highest number of students on a bus is 54. And that's two buses, two different buses on, one's an MJ route and one's an MES route, which kind of surprised me. But anyway, um, we're very happy with that. And just, uh, on policy, just so everybody is aware, especially like Finance Committee, that the Policy 480 changes our capital threshold from 5,000 to 10,000. In case anybody's wondering about, is that qualifies capital? Because, you know, I know that comes into conversations. That's our new capital threshold. When I started here, it was 2,500. This is the second time board policy's changed to 5,000 and not 10,000. And then there was a new information item reflective of board policy 430 with the list of depositories in our investment advisor. There's a link to PMA. And then we bank it, our neighbor bank at Midland's. That's all. Thank you.
I have a comment, please. I just wanted to, I didn't think about this and I can, I'll, I'll make sure to send it, Bob, in the follow-up to the meeting. But if the board could get some information, I noticed on Dr. Shaw's report, we're still getting the custodian, uh, you know, the scores aren't great on this report card, scorecard thing. And, um, you know, there was issue with snow removal. And, you know, we just, I would like to see if we can get an update on the situation with HES and how that contract, uh, update to get them to do the snow removal and, um, and hire people or whatever they need to do to improve these scores would be good. Thank you.
I could call on Perry twice. She already submitted this. Oh, the, um, the, the Financial Treasuries Report you submitted as well.
There, uh, to Mrs. McMillan's point, there was one new one. The financial report, it was a PowerPoint. She referenced Slide 10. Usually it's a financial highlights sheet with five different pages. I just put something different in there this month. We do have that financial highlights piece on our website that Kelly Lynn keeps updated for us. So this was just something, something new. I, I appreciate the comment on it that you liked it. It was, it was, it was something new.
Lincoln, do you have anything else you'd like to share that wasn't in your report tonight?
Well, it's not a shout-out unless it's a shout-out. Every year we tell the, the staff when in doubt on something fishy, just report it anyways. And Sue Isadonis has definitely taken advantage of that. And for that, she is this month's real champion recipient. Thank you, Sue, for everything you do in keeping everyone safe.
I love how you give them the award and they play along and take the picture for it. And, and they're like, okay, like, fine. Like, I, I think it's really nice.
It works.
Yes.
It works.
They do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm happy Mr. Romeo came in and spoke to us this evening. It always sounds better coming from him. So on financials, but I do have a surprise for Mokina is that we're getting a reconciliation check from District 843 in the amount of 64,158.68. The check went out yesterday. I thought we approved it Monday night.
Wonderful.
It'll be here shortly.
I'll carry those while I check's in the mail.
Right. Dr. Shaw, you're looking forward.
We'll give it right back to them a little bit, right? Yes, we will. But it's for a good cause. Okay, thank you. There were no FOIA requests standing on that. Normal items for January agenda, so we're good on that. I wanted to share something nice for the good of Mokina. I wanted to have it in front of me.
While you're getting that, can I share something?
We're absolutely welcome.
Yes. Our crossing guard, Aaron Nim, reached out about some concerns with people taking a left from Willow Crest to Wolf. We work with Deputy Stump and the Public Works. They've got a new fund much larger. If anyone helps with not taking a left.
None at all. Not taking a left from Willow Crest to Wolf, school arrival and school dismissal. We really, really appreciate that. Much bigger sign.
I was talking to the gentleman in the Lions Club, Marv Boer, that helps out with the food baskets. I talk about that a lot at these holidays. It's something the club's been doing for well over 20 years, but I'll give you a brief highlight. Since 2006, we've delivered over 1,130 baskets, helping about 1,900 adults and well over 2,600 children. This Sunday, we will be delivering 20 baskets to people in our community, and that will be helping over 30 adults and 40 children. It's one of the nice things we do to give back, and it's one of the things we're able to facilitate because of our various events throughout the year. And we've been doing that throughout major holidays, and we will be delivering those Sunday morning. And it's a very nice thing we can do to help people that need. And I wanted to share the accurate numbers with you guys. So thank you, Marv, for sharing it with us.
Can I go next? I just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, and just thank everybody around this table and those watching, those in the audience, just for all the community support and that you give to not just the district, but around the community.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else? Yes. Please, go ahead.
Well, Ms. Blaine stole my thunder with the wrapping day. But I will, I'll bring up the PTAC Committee.